Ladies and gentlemen, it is eight minutes after five. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council for Monday, November 14, 2022. Could we have a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Your...
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Yes.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to tonight's calendar?
Yes, I would like to, um, I would like to make a motion that we table the, um, that we move some of the consent calendar items, item H, I, and P, to unfinished business.
To H, I, and P?
Yeah, they're relating to the Ramsey Road project.
All right. Do we have any discussion on that issue?
Well, you said H, I, and what was the other?
H, I, and P.
And P. P is in Paul. Okay.
Can I ask if there's a reason? We've been working on this project for years and years. Is there a reason to take it off the consent calendar?
Uh, Councilmember White?
Yes, well, part of the reason is that I'd like to discuss more about, um, the one item is, is a million dollars in the, that's the, the I, the lift station, and then the others are land acquisition, and I'd like to know more about the, um, I'm just concerned that we're moving forward on land acquisitions and moving more towards, um, having to purchase property using eminent domain, and I would like to discuss that more before we move forward.
Any other comments from any comments or discussion from other council members?
I just have a, I think if I understand it right, um, the Hayden extension, um, we're kind of under the gun at this point in time. That project, which is, has a lot of federal dollars that are coming in to pay for, originally was going to, uh, we had time, and I don't know the date Alan mentioned in our meeting earlier, but that's gotten shortened. We now have a shorter timeframe to get that project going. Is that true?
Oh, we're, um, we are going to construct that project in the summer of 2024. We have utilities that have to be constructed in the summer of 2023, which I think is nine months away, and I have to have right-of-way to construct those projects before I can do the work. So that's the timeframe. Very tight.
But it, it, previously it was extended further for whatever...
Part of it was.
Okay, so we are under a really timed crunch, is that, that's what I understand.
Mr. Mayor, for point of clarification, was there a second to that motion to amend the consent?
There has not been a second yet. Do I, do I hear a second to the motion? One more call for a second to the motion. Hearing none, motion fails. I would now like to call for a motion for an executive session under Idaho Code 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options to for pending litigation or controversies not yet litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Some of, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember White?
Yeah, I would like to know a little bit more of the reasons for going in, like...
Councilmember White would like to hear more of the reasons?
Discussion with regards to potential litigation.
Mm-hmm.
Other discussion or, or Councilmember White?
No, that's me.
No, with no further discussion. May I have a roll call of them, please?
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Ladies or gentlemen, I'm sorry, but, sorry, that was a faux pas on my part. Uh, if you guys could excuse us, we'll, uh, we're gonna go into executive session. 3L, approval of Robidoux Motors purchase order for one GMC 3500 truck and flatbed. 3M, approval of consultant services agreement with Architects West for Crawford Park Design. 3N, approval of Hayden Urban Renewal Agency participation agreement for Hayden City Hall remodel financing of improvements. 3O, approval of participation agreement with the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency for financing improvements of the Ramsey Road Phase III sewer line project. 3P, approval of Epic Land Solutions Consultant Services Agreement Amendment 2 for Ramsey Road Extension Project. 3Q, ratification of October payroll. 3R, ratification of bills paid on 11/9/22. And 3S, approval of bills for payment. Whew, okay. Do we have council discussion or questions about any of the items on the consent calendar? Councilmember White?
Yes, I have, I was wondering about the, um, item D, the mower, the, uh, for the mower and mowing deck. Um, I was just wondering if there were competitive bids sent out for that, um, that item?
There were not competitive bids sent out for that item. Uh, the item that, we did have an item approved prior, um, that will not be available until October of 2023, which will not provide any value to the city in getting the summer maintenance done this coming summer. They went out and found, um, somewhat comparable mower at a much better rate. It's a little bit different. It's not quite the mower that we had, but it's, it'll suffice, and, um, and it's under the dollar amount, so it was not competitively bid.
Okay. And then also K and L, the, um, the three trucks and the one-ton truck, um, were those different than what we had in the last minutes?
The, um, the trucks were being purchased off a government purchase site. We were working with Canute's and Chevrolet. They had trucks supposedly that would be available, uh, immediately. Turns out they were not able to secure those trucks. Um, we went and looked at available trucks. Ford is not gonna be offering even bringing their stuff forward immediately. Um, these trucks will not, they'll have to be built, so we, we may get them late in the summer, but the actual price is actually better than the trucks that were available immediately, so, um, and those are off a government purchase contract.
Okay. And the, the same thing with the, um, with the, uh, consultant services for Crawford Park? I was just wondering if that was sent out for bid as well? That was $75,000 or...
Uh, that was, contract was taken off of the consultant approval roster approved by the council.
Mm-hmm. Okay, there's more than one, though, on there, isn't there, more than one?
At Crawford, I don't, I think there's...
No, on the approval, the list of approval, aren't there like three?
Uh...
Were there competitive bids between the three?
I believe we did have three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we, so we picked off of the approved list for the consultant best-fit D project.
Okay, and you feel like that's a good price, that that's...
Yes.
All right, and then, um, I have some questions about the different aspects of Ramsey Road. The, um, the Revel Land Acquisition Document, um, that's number H. Let's see. So that one, uh, I noticed there's nothing, um, on that property right now. It's just a, an empty lot, right? The, um, it's the John Ramsey, the Revel one. It's letter H.
You have to give me, you got, give me time to go through the...
Okay.
...acquisition document here.
Okay.
She wants to know if there's, if it's got development on it.
It's empty. It's vacant.
Okay, it's vacant.
Okay, it's vacant. So, and the properties on the buildings next to it, to the north of it, those have been purchased already?
We, I, we have not purchased any buildings.
No, of the property, the easement on the properties north of it?
I, I can't tell you, I don't have, I'd have to get a, a map and get the documents
that we've acquired.
Okay.
But that's not, this is, this is a purchase right-of-way for this particular property.
Okay.
It doesn't, it isn't, it isn't tied to the properties adjacent to it in any manner that I'm aware of.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then I was gonna ask questions about the Epic, um, Land Solutions, and I was just noticing that the Welch property, I was looking at the, at the map of where the road's gonna go, and that Welch property, it didn't look to me like it was touching where the road was gonna go. I was just wondering if maybe...
That's, I think that's an acquisition question you're asking?
Yes.
Um, this is a con, contract with, uh, with Epic Land Solutions...
Epic Land Solutions, uh-huh, yes.
...to continue the negotiations with property owners along the corridor.
Right. And I'm just asking, um, from what I could see, that property isn't touching where the road would go or where the, I was just wondering...
The Welch property is key to the project.
Uh-huh. It is key. Okay, I couldn't tell from the map that I was looking at, where it was gonna go. So, I just wanted to, to state for the record that I'm concerned about the Epic Land Solutions and the, and the idea that there's condemnation of properties coming forth, and, um, without, I asked previously if we could hold this off, and we couldn't, but I would like us to have some kind of workshop to be able to look at all, the whole Ramsey Road project and to be able to get the full picture of what's going on, because I'm concerned about condemnation, which is eminent domain on these properties on the Epic Land Solutions.
Do you want it as like just an informational presentation?
Yes.
Like at a future meeting?
I would like to see the full picture of Ramsey Road and everything that's going on. I feel like we're approving an intersection here and a widening there, and, um, so I would like to see the full picture, yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a point of clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
There are not any condemnation proceedings currently pending, first of all, and the reason to contract with Epic Land Solutions to do these negotiations and to work on these contracts for acquisition of right-of-way is so that staff and legal counsel isn't burdened with the amount of work that it takes to do that, so you hire an expert consultant to handle those negotiations. Absolutely, if Epic Land Solutions comes to a point with a landowner where a condemnation proceeding is going to be necessary, that's coming back to council before anything like that is to happen. This is just authority for Epic Land Solutions to continue the work that they've been doing to acquire the right-of-way that is necessary for the already-approved project. Does that make sense?
And to meet the federal, federal guidelines for right-of-way purchases because...
Correct.
...we have to meet federal guidelines.
Right, and so Epic Land Solutions makes sure that we stay absolutely in our lane with regards to these negotiations and contact with these property owners.
In, in the event that a condemnation is required, in what form will that come back to council?
It would come back as a notification and request for approval to proceed, and then my office would handle the actual condemnation, but we're not there.
Question, Mayor, I mean?
Yes, sir.
Donna, you've been here, I think, she has the best grasp of, I think, history.
Couple of years.
And so I'm gonna ask you the question, and in the years you've been here, has a city ever had to use eminent domain to take property?
Not that I'm aware of, but I wasn't fully invested like in the government way project when they were acquiring right-of-way, for example, so I wasn't, I wasn't involved in that piece of it.
So it's something that...
I would know, but I haven't, not that I'm aware of.
Well, something that doesn't happen...
Not very often.
Even if it has happened, and so it's, it's, um, I understand the concern about private property rights, but I don't think we have a history of taking, so...
No, and the whole purpose of using Epic is to really negotiate with these property owners so that they feel like and that they are being paid fairly for the property that is being utilized for the acquisition.
Councilmember White?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, um, on Ramsey Road, uh, I was looking at the map upstairs of Ramsey Road and what's gonna happen, and it looks like it's going through part of it, it's three lanes plus sidewalks plus walking path plus easements. And another thing I would like to do in the workshop, is there any way we can narrow that a bit to, um, so I know that's not in this, that's not part of consent calendar, but that's just part of my...
You would, you would, um, you would risk your federal funding if you changed the approved...
Project plans.
...project plan.
So 92% of this project, if I remember correctly, is being paid by federal dollars?
It's 92 plus or minus, but...
Yeah, almost 93. Okay, so we need a good workshop. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember White, do you have other questions?
Uh, I, I'll let others ask their questions and come back to me if I need to. Thank you.
Other council members have questions about items on the consent calendar?
Nope.
Councilmember DePree?
Thank you. Uh, I guess staying on the Ramsey, just for some information on, it shouldn't, just be real quick, how long has the Ramsey Road project been in the works?
My best recollection is 2008, Donna, do you?
That's probably right. So, all of this planning and everything, so in the scope of time, we're, we're nearing the end.
It's been long before I was here, Ed.
But in the scope of time, we're nearing the end of it.
We are.
Okay. Okay, now, Mr. Satterfield, uh, 3, 3I, um, the approval of authorization for contract amendment with JUB Engineers for the Ramsey Road Gravity Sewer and H6 Lift Station, $990,900. Am I correct in that will be coming from cap fees?
I think the majority of that will be coming, Brett?
I'd like to use, um, a mix of, as they come forward, so you've got multiple different pieces of projects there. On the lift station portion, I'd like to use some of the ARPA dollars, um, and when we get to that point, but yes, this is, this is meant for cap fee, um...
Basically all from dedicated funds, correct?
Right.
Okay. And then going to item 3M, approval of consultant services with Architects West, um, for Crawford Park, that funding, is that coming from park impact fees?
Yes.
Dedicated funds? Okay.
And, yes.
And?
Uh, the design is coming from, from impact fees.
Okay. Uh, 3N, uh, the, HERA participation agreement, City Hall elevator and remodel, that's HERA agreeing to up to $500,000 above the budgeted amount?
Up to 250.
200, yeah, I'm sorry, the budget amount is 500, and they're agreeing any overage over 500 from HERA.
I, they're agreeing to cover the overage of our budget, and I'd have to look at what the actual budget number is, but up to $250,000 over our, our budgeted amount.
So the, the, um, the amount in the, in the bid was 213,000, but they agreed to include up to 250 if... So the, the amount in the bid was 213,000, but they agreed to include up to 250 if, if there were overages.
Hura agreed to cover that. Okay, thank you. 3O, Hura participation agreement for Ramsey Road sewer design. I believe they are, Hura is going to participate in the amount of 185,000. Is that where that?
They, they agreed in a motion today in their meeting that they would, they would reimburse the city for the design portion up to the 100 and number that you said.
185.
185,000 for that design, yes.
Okay, thank you. We're missing our finance director tonight, aren't we?
Yeah, she's not here tonight.
Okay. Okay, well, let me see, maybe...
Is it on a bill?
Yeah, it is.
I can try it.
On page 5 of 21, Car Star of Hayden, 2020 Ford Ranger, it looks like repair and maintenance, it looks like, rear end, rear bumper. Anybody know what happens here? Is that an accident or, that's a, that's a two-year-old vehicle?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was an accident.
It was an accident? Okay.
Pulling out, so insurance will cover, will be reimbursed for part of that. We have a deductible we have to meet on it and then...
That was my question, will insurance be covering a significant amount of that? Okay. Oh, Lakes Highway District, $390,000, and there had been some discussion with that and the city hall, am I, am I right with that was going to be put off because they had to sign something or?
Yeah, so all the, all the documents are signed now. So we were waiting for the county to approve the sublease approval. So, we're entering into a sublease with Lakes Highway District, basically under what their agreement is with the county. But in that agreement, it says that the county has to agree to the uses and the sublease. So we put together an agreement in writing that the county agrees to it. They signed that. That was the last piece we were waiting for. And so with that, now that triggers, all the, all the agreements have been signed and triggers our first payment for the Lakes Highway property, buildings.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, there had been some discussion, but since those documents had not been signed, that money could possibly have been used for...
We're in a new budget year, so we, so those funds from last budget year were carried over, so yes, we'll...
Okay, but now that the documents have been signed, we're starting that period?
Yeah.
Okay. On page, what is this, 19 of 21, Western States Equipment Company, 681, 681, 681, Strawberry Fields Lift Stations, what are, what are, what happened here? What is that?
All are, we, the generators at the sewer lift stations, which have to function if the power goes out?
Yeah.
They are serviced semi-annually, and that is the fee for each one, for each of those...
Servicing of the...
681, for each one of those generators that we have. And they test them, they load test them, they check them for fluid levels, battery charge, I mean, it's...
It's routine maintenance and stuff. Okay, thank you.
Other questions of council on the consent calendar?
Yes.
I just have a comment.
Councilmember Satterfield.
In regards to Councilmember De Priest's question, the Ramsey Road thing was started in 2008, as Ellen stated. It's been, you're the third mayor, and it's come before, it's come before several council, councils. There's been a ton of work. We even, if I'm not mistaken, Ellen, we lost our financing one time, or it was delayed severely.
We were in, we were in close proximity to losing the financing one time.
So I would really encourage council to follow through on this because there's been a lot of work done, property already obtained, and the ball's moving, and it's been moving a long time, almost 15 years now. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify what Councilmember De Priest asked about the J U B contract. Does part of that million dollars come from ARPA funds?
I would like for it to, I'll come back with a proposal because the plan is to spend it on the lift station. And this is the design, what portion would be the design of the lift station. And so, we have cap fees that, that we're anticipating spending 2.8. So depending on how we, how you want to do that, so that's why I say under this, we can spend all of cap fee money on this request. But I'll, I'll come back with a proposal because we won't have to pay this for a while. I'll come back with a proposal. Because I think it might be good to spend some of that before, anyways.
Okay, yeah, because I was...
Yeah, it's a good question.
...impression we would get a chance to talk about the ARPA funds before they were finally approved. Okay.
I'll, I'll bring that back.
Okay. And one, one question on the, on the finances is we have on page 12 of 21, for law enforcement, we have 33,000. So that doesn't look like any of the newly allocated extra 300,000 that we gave to the sheriff is being paid yet.
That's correct. We have, we've been in negotiations with a new contract, and so we are paying under the old contract.
Okay.
And we're getting closer to a draft. In fact, they asked, asked me, we met, Mayor and I met with them, I think a week ago?
Yeah.
And so from that, we got some concerns in the, in the draft that we will implement, have fun to look at it, get it back to them, and then hopefully get it. And once that happens, then we'll, we'll probably be paying the higher amount. But yes, we're paying our current contractual amount.
And we're on about version three at this point.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the sheriff gets that money because he's got three new deputies to hire with it, so.
We're trying to add, the reason why it's a little more complicated, we're trying to add some more specificity to, to the services and what we're getting.
Okay.
And so, and that's just been a little tricky, so.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar as stated A through S.
Do I have a sec? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Could we please separate out the three that I discussed earlier? The I, H, I, and P.
I believe we, we had a vote on that and...
Okay. There wasn't a vote, there was a motion with no seconds.
It was a motion that was not seconded.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I withdraw.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White? Due to the fact that I object to H, I, and P going on any further, I, without more discussion, I'm voting no at present. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Now moving into our visitor or public comment session. If you, if anyone would like to make a public comment, address the council tonight, we're more than happy to hear it. We would appreciate if you would fill out a form from the back. It's on the table at the back there. At this point, we've received no forms, as to my knowledge. Do we have anyone that would like to provide public comment to us tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on from there. Moving on to unfinished business. Madison Capital LLC. For those of you that may not have been here last week, we heard the, the presentation and the public hearing for Madison Capital LLC, also known as Madison Ranch. We suspended discussion on that item at the end of the meeting. Things were getting very late. At this point, I'd like to ask council if they are ready to continue deliberations on, continue the discussion on Madison Capital.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
President Roder.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we continue deliberations until our next meeting. I'm not ready to move forward.
We have a motion and a second on continuing our discussion until next council meeting. Do we have any...
A date?
Additional discussion? Do we have dates?
I'm just not here at the next meeting, so can we talk about a different, well, see if it passes. If it passes, we can make a motion for a different date, but...
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on that? Hearing none? Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White? Councilmember Satterfield?
No.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. At this point, we need to try to come up with a, with a calendar, as everybody's diving for their phones over here. And here.
So, how about Tuesday, the 29th?
Put my phone off.
Good job.
It's the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
Oh, November 29th.
The 29th, yeah, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving.
I'm not sure Ellen can make it that night.
I don't think Helen's going to be here that night. It's his birthday. What?
And...
We'll just bring Google for take.
Okay, aside from Ellen.
For, for a point of clarification, so the motion is to continue the deliberations on all three action items, which is the zone map amendment, the sewer service study, and the preliminary plat. Is that consistent with your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we looking at the 29th?
May I ask a question?
Councilmember White.
Could we move the meeting on the 22nd to the 29th to accommodate that?
Due to Thanksgiving? We have a public hearing already noticed for that night.
Okay.
Okay.
29th word for almost everybody?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll plan for it then.
It's not the 26th? 29th? So just for clarification?
Yes, sir.
We're moving next week's council meeting?
No.
Or no, we're having a next one?
We'll have a special meeting on the 29th.
Yes, we'll have an extra, yeah.
All right.
Councilman Satterfield for the 22nd remaining.
Is this a special meeting with just that on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So our regular meeting is still scheduled for next Tuesday, on the 22nd.
5:00 PM on the 29th?
5:00 PM on the 29th? Does that work, folks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
5:00 PM, good question. Then we will continue moving along our calendar here. First of all, I would like to, to thank Ellen and Suzanne. Ellen is in charge of our Public Works Department and, and our Parks Crew. Suzanne is in charge of our, of our Recreation Division, and I'd like to thank both of you for an outstanding Veterans Day ceremony that you put together. Everybody worked really well, the, the facility was in great shape and got taken down very quickly, and thank you very much for all your work on that.
I'll pass that on.
I will.
I believe we're looking at our, Brett, your, your report. What do you have for us?
I, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I've been asked by staff as far as setting things, whether or not you would like to cancel the meeting on December 27th, so a couple days after Christmas. Normally, we have done that. And again, you don't have to do that, you can think about it, we can get a decision on the 22nd, at least get you thinking about that. That's been kind of standard.
I can't make it.
I can't make it either.
Oh, therefore it is canceled.
You can't make those two days anyways.
The 27th is why.
So we wouldn't have a forum. So yeah, Donna was asking about whether or not, you know, to have hearings and, and so we thought that was probably not going to be a good time to have a meeting, so. All right, we'll, this is not on the agenda, should we formalize it next?
You have to formalize it next time.
We'll formalize it with a motion to cancel that meeting next time.
You can put it on cancel.
Okay. And just mention, I think Sean sent around to the mayor and council to hold December 8th. That's the night we get together, mayor and council and staff, and we have like a Christmas holiday dinner, and we've done that annually. And we'll get you more information, but just if you'd hold that, hold that date. Also, I head on there to thank our Recreation and Parks folks. I thought it went well, and the weather somewhat cooperated, it was a little chilly, but it didn't rain or snow, and we had a good turnout. So, it went well. And the last thing I think everybody knows, just a thank you to the, the public, those that participated in, in our democracy and voted and, and, you know, whether you were for it or against it, I think that, you know, it went out to the, to the citizens to decide if they wanted to add additional officers, and so that did pass, and we put some information out, and so we'll have more work to do. I mentioned, also, I do think it will be good to consider having a, forming a new commission, a public safety commission that's more permanent, and we put some parameters to that, and then have the council appoint some folks to that, and then have them maybe meet a couple times a year, and they can look at how things are going statistically. They can also evaluate, you know, how we're spending the money and make sure we're spending the money appropriately and, and just in relation to public safety. So, anyways, with that, that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. We have an opportunity here for roundtable discussion and... Counsel, I have a question for you. It's been suggested that we have a workshop on the Ramsey Road. Does that require simply a council agreement on that for the workshop? Do we vote on that? How does that work?
Well, I was just going to say, I, kind of clarified, I mean, in an upcoming meeting,
we could just have a presentation, kind of an update. This is where, these are the properties that need to be acquired, these are the ones that have, that we've paid for, this is the extent of the project, go through and allow, you know, you to ask any questions you have. We could tie that into...
Councilmember White, is that satisfactory?
Yes, that would be...
Okay, great. We'll, we'll schedule that for an upcoming meeting then.
It's probably should be like January.
Say January.
Okay, we can schedule that. We were just getting timing on it, but...
Roundtable discussion, does any council member have anything they'd like to say? Councilmember De Priest.
Wouldn't want to let you down. Okay, I kind of look at this as the opportunity to talk about things, give feedback, respond to a lot of what might be going around that I feel needs to be addressed. And in regard to the recent ballot issue, I also want to thank all of the people who did vote for taking the opportunity to vote, and I want to clear up hopefully for the last time, some things that I keep hearing about. Number one, the council did not vote to raise taxes. The council voted two to two, with the mayor breaking the tie, to put the question to the citizens of Hayden on the ballot. I struggle with anyone who wouldn't want to give the people the voice through the vote. Did, the question was, did the citizens feel Hayden needed additional sheriff coverage and were they willing to pay for it? Council did not make that decision, the people did, by a vote of 3,665 yes, 2,096 no. A 63% majority made the decision. The fundamental foundational element of the United States is the people. The Constitution and the rights it grants the people are what make this country great. People's voice is determined, is what determines how this country, this state, and this city operates. I'm not going to read about the comments that I've been getting. If you are truly a patriot and truly believe in the Constitution and Bill of Rights, then I don't understand how giving the people the vote on this issue was not demonstrative of how the founding fathers intended the system to work. If you truly believe, in my opinion, if you truly believe in the Constitution, then you have to acknowledge that it is for and applies equally to all people. There are many things happening in this country that I don't agree with, there are many things in Cooney County that I don't like or agree with, but the Constitution and the Bill of Rights gives all the people rights. The election gave all of the Hayden people who cared to vote the equal voice to determine how Hayden wants to address and fund our law enforcement issues, and I believe that the people of Hayden spoke.
Other council members have anything they'd like to say during roundtable? Council President Roder.
I'd just like to share that I've sat on the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency as the only elected member by the people. All the other members are nominated and appointed, and... And over the last several years, we've talked about a community center. And there's some possibilities that Hura's interested in possibly funding a community center. And one of the things that would be delightful is if we could hold our veterans event inside, among other things that the city could do. So anyway, that's, there's interest by the Hura board. We do, Hura owns some property that's to the east of the Owl Cafe, about an acre, 1.6 acre parcel. And I'm not saying that's where it would go, but we have some possibilities. So I just like to, I like the idea that we're exploring those options, and I think it's something that would be really nice for our community. If any of you have ever been to Blanchard, Blanchard is a really small town, although it's very old. They have a community center, and it's not that big, but there's hardly anybody up there, you know? So I think, I think we could, we could possibly, and there's, and I've heard that there's interest in possible private donations to a project like that, so I just wanted to share that, that there's talk, and it's maybe a possibility, but that's all I had.
Good information. Thank you. Other council members have anything? Councilmember Satterfield?
Just to echo Councilmember, Council President Roder's comments, that's where a community center with gymnasiums would come in real good. We could have all sorts of that stuff inside, so.
Yeah.
I'm never going to quit promoting a community center. And the other thing, I want to echo the mayor's comments to Susie and Ellen. Thank you, guys. I don't think anybody realizes those things don't just happen. We show up and it happens. Thank you for all your hard work and effort and your people that work with you. And I also want to thank the Safety Committee for all the work they did on recommending the council that we put the increased levy to vote of the people. And I'm glad that the people didn't believe a lot of the misinformation that was out there, because it was soaring everywhere. I, I mean, it's one thing not to know the truth, it's another thing to know the truth and lie about it. So thank you, thank you all for doing what you did. Thank you, Mayor.
Just on top of that, just mention not to forget our Veterans Commission, who, Susie works with them, and they did a lot of work and effort for their in-force as well, and appreciate their time and efforts.
Good point.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember White?
Yeah, I too wanted to echo thanks to Susie and Ellen and the veterans. It was just a really honoring time, I felt like. It was, it was good to see young people there, too, and that the kids know what our history is and what America's about, and the sacrifices being made.
I do have to echo what Brett said, that veterans, our Veterans Commission is one of the busiest commissions I've ever seen, and every commission we've had is invested in Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies. So they really are the catalyst for those ceremonies. We just help them along.
That was very, very nice. And I just wanted to, to just make note that, you know, along with this vote, the people have entrusted us with these extra funds to help the sheriff along, and I would, I was just wondering when we'll have, well, you talked about the contract earlier for this initial 300,000 we've given him, but when will we have a contract in place for the new levy amount? And also, what will it look like in the handling of the levy funds and a designated fund? So I think maybe that could be another agenda item where we could talk about how to make sure he gets...
Yeah, we'll be very specific as those funds come in, you know, that set amount will go into a designated area.
Okay.
As far as the contract, we're looking at like different ways to do it, and it'll be coming out next year, because those increases won't happen until the FY 2024, so it'll be some months before we get there, but...
Okay.
They'll take it. And that's why, again, with having a public safety commission, we can report to them, you know, here's the contract, here's what was spent, and they can also, you know, just make sure the funds are being spent accordingly to what ballot measure said.
Mm-hmm, thank you. That's it for me.
Councilmember De Priest?
No, I was just, and Brett touched on it, that the ballot amount, the increase, was for next fiscal year. And so I would assume the contract with them wouldn't be for another year.
Yeah, so it'll be closer to that.
It's the next contract, not the one we're currently negotiating.
Because this one's kind of an interim with the 300,000, as you mentioned, that will put some...
There's no other roundtable items?
Thank you.
Here are motion for adjournment?
Some of...
You don't want to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right.
We're not adjourning the meeting?
We're just taking a recess.
We're going to take another recess. Yes. Done.
The workshop's part of the...
Workshop's part of your agenda, so you'll just recess and then reset for work.
That is correct.
Like 15 minutes or something?
Yeah.